That's right, that was Kelly Share, city engineer by day. Okay, just before we do our recognitions, and we have an important one today, I'd like to look for any disclosures of pecuniary interest, I believe councillor Turner.
Good afternoon, your worship. I'd like to declare conflicts of pecuniary interest with respect to 8.3 in the Planning and Environment Committee report for number seven, planning for supervised consumption facilities and temporary overdose prevention sites, as well as bills 250, 248, 249, and 254, not quite in order there, as they all pertain to the same item and to my employers, the Middlesex Fund and Health Unit.
Thank you councillor Turner. Anyone else? There being none, I'm going to move to the podium for our recognitions. Colleagues, today we welcome a number of special guests into council chambers, Paul and Barbara Anne Gagnon, as well as Greg Murray, George Mayette from Maples for Vimy, Larry Fleet from Scouts Canada, and Barbara Robinson from Girl Guides of Canada. Please welcome, and more, and join me just right here, perfect, perfect. Last year, a group of 60 Canadians travelled to France for the 100th anniversary of the Battle of Vimy Ridge. Of course, we all know that Vimy Ridge was a significant moment in Canadian history. Many people have called it a defining moment in Canadian history. This is the first time soldiers from all parts of Canada fought together under Canadian command. In remembrance of over 100,000 Canadians who fought at Vimy Ridge, including many Londoners, the City of London is pleased to present this contribution of $10,000 towards the cost of having 10 Vimy Centennial Maple Trees planted this year. These trees will stand as a recognition of the sacrifices made by Londoners during World War I and the bond that we share with our allies in France and right across Europe. Colleagues, please join me in thanking these incredible Londoners for the work that they're doing to remember this very, very important occasion. Paul, welcome. And first of all, it's a shame that your daughter wasn't able to join us again today for the singing of the national anthem. I'm not sure if you heard the version that we played, but a little different than her style.
It was a new version.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll have to have her back soon. Please, on behalf of the City of London, please accept this contribution to the incredible work that you're doing. If you'd like to say a few words, please, by all means.
Sure, okay. First off, on behalf of our group, which this project could never have come off, we'd like to thank the City of London for their support of the program. This is an amazing event. This is a legacy that has been created in France among our Canadian group, as well as the citizens of the Republic of France, and most notably, the northern area of France where the battle took place. I'd like to especially thank Larry Fleet, George Mayette, of course, my wife Barbara Anne, that this project, the support of your family is incredible for you. Greg Murray, who's with the Middle, excuse me, Thames Valley School, the school is? Hillcrest Public School, who has done a twinning with a small school in Duzon, France. So now they've got the kids corresponding with each other, and it was part of the program. Barbara Robinson representing the Girl Guides, and Bruce Stock, who has joined the group a little bit later, and Bruce having been the aide-de-camp for Governor General Georges Vanyé between '64 and '66. And Bruce has a nice connection with one of the towns over in France called Chez DZ, which has the only Quebec memorial and military cemetery attributed to the Quebec 22nd Regiment, which was head-up, commanded by Governor General Georges Vanyé. And that's the battle that Georges Vanyé lost his leg in, and Bruce was his aide-de-camp between '64 and '66. Now Bruce is part of the program, and he published a book that is now in a museum, which is dedicated to the Quebec 22nd Regiment and Georges Vanyé. So this is a really cool, ongoing program. This donation helps us complete the program and carry it forward for generations to come. So Mayor Brown, thank you very much on behalf of the group.
Casper Randy, thank you for being here. You're welcome to stay. We shouldn't be more than six or seven hours. Okay, we'll see you at Remembrance Day. Okay, colleagues, let's move through the schedule of review of confidential matters to be considered in public session. There are none. I'll look for a motion to go into closed session for the reasons outlined on the agenda. Any additional? There are none. So that's been moved by councillor Usher, and it was seconded by, thank you very much, councillor Usher, I saw first, but we'll get to you next. Councillor Slive votes manually, yea.
Close in vote, motion carries 14-0.
Okay, we will convene in committee room three. Anyone watching from home in the gallery, we won't be any longer than an hour, we'll be out before 5:15. I expect us to be out sooner than that. It is four twenty. We folded time, and we are well within the 5:15 cutoff. So we'll move forward through the agenda, and... Let's move to confirmation and signing of the minutes of the previous meeting. That was the tenth meeting held on May eighth, 2018. That's moved by Counselor Armstrong, seconded by Counselor Zafman. Any discussion on the minutes? Let's call the question. And we're voting.
Counselor Usher? Closing the vote, the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Okay, communications and petitions. There are communications, one added. This is six point one, Planning for Supervised Consumption Facilities for Temporary Overdose Prevention Sites. Look for a motion to refer to the appropriate committee. Moved by Counselor Park, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. Any discussion? Okay, let's call the question.
Counselor Park?
Now I've got it. Closing fourteen to zero carries.
Okay, Agenda Item Seven, motions of which notice is given. There are none, so we'll move to reports. This is the eleventh report of the Corporate Services Committee. We'll move to the Chair, Chair Helmer, to present.
I haven't heard that anything needs to be pulled, so I think I'll put the entire report on the floor. I will just note that there is a report affirming our highest possible credit rating. This is from Moody's. It's kind of an interim report. As you know, there is a negative outlook for the province, and so they looked at municipalities, and they looked at London. And they did reaffirm their AAA credit rating for London, which, of course, we've had since 1977.
Counselor Hopkins, Counselor Turner.
Yes, Your Worship. I just want to make a comment on four point two, the Mayor's New Year's Honor List, age-friendly London. I was so pleased to see this come forward, and really, I think this is, being a senior here on council, a great opportunity to promote our city. So we were the first city in Canada to be age-friendly, and so it's only fitting to acknowledge this new category, age-friendly. I know we are an aging population as well, and there's many, many Londoners that are involved, not only in our own advisory groups, but community groups, business groups throughout the city, and it's... I know we're not going to run out of finding people to nominate, and really pleased. I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. And Counselor Turner, then Morgan.
Thank you, Your Worship, and very good news with respect to our credit rating. I think the committee articulated it quite well. Counselor Helmer talked about how the report reflected the incurrence of costs associated with rapid transit, and nonetheless, we're in very stable and strong footing. The one thing I did want to point out is that is pointed out in the report, and I think it serves as a note of caution to us, too. When we discussed the transit initiatives, specifically the fare structuring with the youth and with the low-income cutoff transit programs, we looked to those as pilot programs, and we saw those with opportunities. We drew from one-time funding opportunities that did not go unnoticed by the credit rating agencies, and I think it's important for us to keep that in mind when we look to new programs, even if they are pilot programs, that they are noticed. It could have impact, and we have to think long and carefully before drawing from those sources of funding for programs.
Counselor Morgan.
Thank you. Also on the credit rating report, something that I wanted to highlight again, as highlighted at committee, was the inclusion of our multi-year budget as a positive management and governance practice. Certainly, this is the first multi-year budget that the city has undertaken as we move into the next multi-year budget, which the future council will decide on. Certainly, they had some very positive comments about how that budget has created a very stable fiscal outlook and something that they saw as a good management and governance practice. So kudos to our staff and our team for all the work they did on that multi-year budget. It seems to be executing very well and hasn't gone unnoticed by our credit rating agencies.
Any other speakers? Chair, did you have any closing remarks? I think I'll just echo the words that we've heard already, Ms. Barbona and your team. Outstanding work, and council colleagues as well. I think that a couple of significant initiatives that we brought forward during this term of council, as Counselor Morgan mentioned, the multi-year budget, as Counselor Turner, I believe, was mentioned, BRT, and those are both highlighted as positive, so that shouldn't go unnoticed to anyone. So with that, I'm going to call the question.
Counselor Zafman?
Just looking to vote, yea, manually.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
That brings us to the eighth report of Civic Works Committee. I'll hand things over to the Chair.
Thank you. I will hand things over to the Vice Chair, who covered the meeting in my absence.
Musical chairs at its best. I'm prepared to put the whole report on the floor, noting that we made significant process on W-12A with the cell nine expansion. A lot of important work happening over in Ward One at Hamilton Road and the Dingman Pumping Station upgrades. So I'll put the whole report on the floor.
Any speakers? Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to mention the work that's happening in Hamilton Road and thank our staff for the efforts they made in the Streetscape Master Plan that's going to be implemented between Chesley and Egerton. Most of the work is really the streets and the sewers and the water mains, the regular work we would do in renewal, but there's also going to be a number of cosmetic changes that really are going to make a difference. I was there with a member of the Business Association and some of our staff and the consultants today, doing a bit of a walk-around to see what was going to happen, and it's exciting. It's exciting. People are going to be pleased, and we're looking very forward to these changes along that corridor. So, thank you.
Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to thank my colleagues on the letter forward on the automated speed enforcement. That's a really important initiative. It's interesting, and I wanted to rise to talk to this because I wanted to indicate a bit of the level of support that exists within the community. I was talking with one of my rural council colleagues, and he said, "You're really sure you want to go down this path? And it's going to be really unpopular." You know, the number-one email I get and calls I get is about enforcing speed within our residential neighborhoods. I'm glad that this was extended to community safety zones and not just school zones. And I think, I actually asked in one of my ward meetings, I said, "Is this something that you could support?" And nobody said no. Everybody's like, "Yeah, absolutely. If there's going to be enforcement, it's really important that we control the speed within our residential neighborhoods, and that's where the greatest concerns are." So, well done. Thank you. I do look forward to seeing what gets brought back in response.
Other speakers? Counselor Usher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to mention that also. So since he did so well eloquently, I won't bother, but I really need to thank our colleagues for bringing it forward. We got a lot of favorable comments on this unexpectedly. I didn't realize we would. I didn't realize the public would have paid such an attention, but they certainly did, and they sent us a lot of positive emails. Mr. Chair, I just want to bring up a mention about item number two-two. I know the Chair mentioned the W-12 site extension, but for the records, I want to explain a little bit that this is not the expansion that we're talking about that will take us out to 2050. This is just another cell. We've got a cell number eight right now that will take us another year, and this is for an additional cell which was slated for before. This will take us another three and a half years. And then when we do that, after that, we'll go to cell number ten, which will take us another three years. So we've got a little bit of life in this, about eight years, and after that, then we'll do expansion that will take us out to 2050. But that's not in this. This is just for cell number nine. Thank you.
Other speakers? Counselor Turner, certainly I get a number of emails and calls about speeding in neighborhoods as well, and so thanks for highlighting that. And Ms. Sher, I wanted to point out that I received a total of zero phone calls for snow removal in May, so please congratulate your staff. Job well done. I don't know what changed. With that, let's call the question. We're voting.
Counselor Squar? Closing the vote, the motion carries fourteen to zero.
And we are moving right along this evening, this afternoon, actually. Ninth report of Planning and Environment Committee. We'll go to the Chair, Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Your Worship. My pleasure to put forward the ninth report of the Planning and Environment Committee. I would move all except for Item Seven or three point three, depending on which hymn book you're reading. I haven't heard any calls for any other items, but I would look to my colleagues for any of those.
Any other sections? Any other clauses? No. Okay. Any discussion on the bulk of the report, with the exception of seven and three point three? Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you very much. Looking at four point three, or item number ten here, thanks for the support for the Hamilton Road business community. We're looking at a business improvement area going forward, and that's also an item of big excitement for certainly the business community. So we're thrilled about this as well. So nice to see these things coming together and looking forward to what's going to happen over the summer.
And any other speakers? Okay, let's call the question.
Counselor Zafman?
Through the, sorry, through, Ms. Mayor, just reading that it says Items one to twelve be approved. I just wanted to double-check that we're not approving seven currently.
So that's noted. We are voting on Items one through twelve, with the exception of seven. That's three point three, Planning for Supervised Consumption Facilities and Temporary Overdose Prevention Sites.
Closing the vote. Counselor Hopkins? No, Counselor Ridley. Closing the vote, the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thank you, Your Worship. With that, I'd like to ask the Vice Chair to present number seven.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yes, Your Worship. I'd like to put three point three on the board here. It was a public participation meeting for supervised consumption facilities as well as the temporary overdose prevention site, and it was a very lengthy debate, public participation meeting. Gallery was full with overflowing rooms as well. There was a lot of community input and conversation. The recommendation in front of you is about adding new policies citywide in our official plan as well as zoning by law amendments to allow for these sites to exist. So I want to let you know that as well, the federal government is allowing municipalities to have these policies in place. And I, and to have the criteria as well as the flexibility in our policies. One thing I found from the public, that it is important that they still be part of that conversation, and our policies do allow for that as well. So I just wanted to make those comments and to let you know the Planning Committee did support the recommendation in front of you with the changes to our official policy as well as our zoning by law amendments.
Thank you. Counselor Usher, anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I attended this meeting because I was interested in this subject, and I just want to make sure that we understand around this horseshoe tonight that this was not to do with any specific site. It was strictly to do with the glossary of terms as well as the new policy and the definitions that would be applied to any site at all, but not any specific site.
And I'd just like to add to that. This is a citywide change in our policy.
Yeah, and colleagues, if you weren't able to attend the Planning and Environment Committee, there was just some, I would say, potential confusion over whether this was about specific sites or whether it was about the official plan amendment citywide, and so I really appreciate both the Vice Chair and the Counselor just reiterating that at this meeting. I know that that was a topic of discussion at committee. I have Counselor Zafman. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question first. I noted that there were some changes made to the previously circulated draft policy, one of them being a strike-through of that these facilities have equipment and trained staff present to oversee a person's drug consumption and assist in the event of an overdose or other health risk. I was just curious why that was taken out of the policy and definition.
Mr. Fleming?
Your Worship, we just felt that was a little too specific in terms of the length of the description in a policy.
Through, Ms. Mayor, thank you for that. And I see just after that, I mean, it does say these facilities shall offer additional health and drug-related support services, so I guess that can mean a bit of a broader scope, so that's fine. One thing which I guess I was somewhat surprised with, the definition still, and I know this was discussed at length at the Planning Committee, was that there's no defined separation in terms of an actual length, because that would cause some potential issues on finding appropriate sites. I, and obviously, again, this is somewhat different than whether it's a methadone clinic or a cannabis dispensary or something along those lines, but not to lump these together, but I would say that these are all somewhat sensitive uses as a reason why we would have some separation. And so I was just curious, have we had any look at how this might look if someone was to appeal these definitions? Because frankly, if it says separated, it could be separated by a wall or a building or a block, or, you know, it's just a very vague definition, and I'm just a little worried that that may put us in some hot water.
Counselor Hopkins?
If I could go to Mr. Fleming? If I could go to Mr. Fleming?
Well, Your Worship, the term separation is used in many policies in the official plan, and I think that we'd be able to point to that. I think what the policy tries to do here is not identify specific distances of separation from the facility, but rather to identify that these are the types of separations that we'd be looking for. That being said, there's an understanding in the policy that there is flexibility, and I think it's important everyone understands that. If there was a definitive separation distance with some number attached to it, it's unlikely that we'd be able to meet the second goal, which is to provide these facilities or plan for them in locations that they could be used or that would serve the population that need them. So, there needs to be flexibility, but there also needs to be some clarity around the types of sites that we're looking for, and that's what the policy strives to do.
And through, through, Mr. Mayor, just a final question. Again, going back a little bit to our discussion around the cannabis dispensary and the zoning principles around that, the province could, you know, depend, not, I mean, they could supersede what we have decided and put a site wherever they would want for a cannabis dispensary, even though we have some policies in place that we have struck. Is there any possibility that even with putting these definitions and policies in place that they could potentially deny or say somewhere where our facilities could go? Is that something that we are looking at here? Would this get reviewed by the province and the feds?
Yes, if I can go to Mr. Fleming again. Thank you.
Well, Your Worship, I won't give you the legal answer. I'll give you the planning perspective, and that is, first of all, that we have been working with representatives from the federal government in the preparation of these policies to ensure that we're on track here. Second thing is that these facilities, in fact, are not necessarily owned by, in fact, they won't be owned by the federal government or the provincial government. So, it's a little bit different than what is being referred to by the Counselor with cannabis retail stores. Those are intended to be actually owned and operated by the province at this time in Ontario.
Through the Mayor, thank you for that, and for sure, I understand there's a bit of a difference there. Just wanted to make sure we're doing all our homework and asking these questions, because I don't think I heard some of them at the Planning Committee, so appreciate those answers and look forward to having this settled. Thanks.
Are there any other speakers? Counselor Helmer?
Well, I appreciate what Counselor Saifman was discussing, especially at the end, and we did have a bit of a discussion at Planning Committee about whether public use provisions would apply in the case of supervised consumption services or temporary overdose prevention sites, and I think it would depend on who the operator of the service was. I mean, it would require zoning interpretation, which I don't think we need to get into right now. I do think that this is a good way forward in terms of the official plan policy. I know we had some discussion about it before, and we talked about the council policy, which was a kind of interim measure. I think we do need to have this kind of flexibility and look at a bunch of different factors when we're trying to figure out where the best locations are for these important health services. I do think that staying away from the fixed separation distance is important for this one. I also think that some of these are probably not necessary, some of these separations, but I think it's better to err on this side than the other way of having fewer, and we can try and guide the location decision-making with that policy framework and then deal with the zoning when it comes forward. I just want to remind everyone that in the absence of these changes, you know, that these facilities could operate anywhere a clinic could operate, which includes basically all the businesses or commercial, all the shopping areas with no zoning amendments whatsoever, and no public consultation process, no public meetings in City Hall. So, I do think we need to find the best possible locations for these services, both for the users of the services and also the broader community. And I think we can do that by having this kind of policy on the books, so we can make good decisions when it comes time for the zoning amendments.
Thank you for that, Counselor Helmer. The other part of that, the zoning process will be when a site is brought forward, it goes through the zoning application where there will be another public participation meeting and go through the requirements. So, that is to come. If sites are going to be chosen, they will be brought forward through an application process that will most likely take a couple months as well. So, I really want to thank the committee for a lengthy debate, and I want to thank the community, too, for the interest and the ongoing conversations that we're going to have with the community when it comes to these sites. And I also wanted to say that, given the need in our community, that it is important that these policies are put in place. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Well, allow me, Counselor Hopkins, to thank you for chairing that portion of the meeting. I know that it was a very lengthy public participation meeting, and of course, this is a very emotional topic in our community, and it was, if you don't mind me saying, an excellent meeting. It was well-tempered, and I think every member of the public that was looking for an opportunity to speak in a safe environment had that opportunity to do so. So, thanks for your leadership. With that, I will call the question. Counselor Armstrong's voting manually, yea. Little hiccup with the system today. We're all experiencing it.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 13 with 1 to 0.
Thank you, Counselor Turner. Colleagues, I know it feels like we're almost done, but there is going to be some lengthy reporting out from the 11th report of council in closed session, and Counselor Ridley has graciously volunteered to do that again for us, so thank you very much. Over to you.
You're very welcome, and I won't take offense if people nod off during these 18 pages. Hopefully, your neighbor will help you when you need to wake up. The 11th report of council in closed session. Your council in closed session reports, one, offered to purchase industrial land, 1873904 Ontario Limited, Lot 26, Plan 33M-215, Trafalgar Industrial Park. That as a procedural matter pursuant to section 239.6 of the Municipal Act 2001, the following recommendation be forwarded to council in closed session for the purpose of considering whether the recommendation should be forwarded to council for deliberation and a vote in public session. That on the recommendation of the Managing Director, Corporate Services and City Treasurer, Chief Financial Officer, and on the advice of Manager of Realty Services, the following actions be taken with respect to the city-owned industrial land located on the west side of Sovereign Road in Trafalgar Industrial Park, containing an approximately 2.15 acres being composed of Lot 26, Plan 33M-215 outlined on the sketch heretofore attached to Schedule A. A, the offer submitted from Centennial Windows and Doors under the corporate name 1873904 Ontario Limited, the purchaser, to purchase the subject property from the city at a purchase price of $118,250, reflecting a sale price of $55,000 per acre heretofore as Schedule B be accepted, subject to the following conditions. The purchaser within 30 days from the acceptance of the offer examining the title at the purchaser's own expense. The purchaser within 30 days of acceptance of the offer carrying out soil tests as it might reasonably require. And the proposed commencement date of construction being within three years of the date of deed in place of required one year from date of deed. Two, offered to purchase industrial land, C6 Developments Limited, Part II, Plan 16368, Cuddy Industrial Lands. That as a procedural matter pursuant to section 239.6 of the Municipal Act, the following recommendations be forwarded to council in closed session for the purpose of considering whether the recommendation should be forwarded to council for deliberation and vote in public session. That on the recommendation of the Managing Director, Corporate Services and City Treasurer, Chief Financial Officer, and on the advice of Manager of Realty Services, the following actions be taken with respect to city-owned industrial land located on the north side of Page Street, being part of Cuddy Industrial Lands, containing an area of approximately 3.459 acres, being composed of Part II, Plan 33R 16368, outlined on sketch heretofore as Schedule A. A, the offer submitted from Progressive Industrial Fluids Limited under the corporate name C6 Development, the purchaser, be to purchase the subject property from the city at a purchase price of $224,835, reflecting a sale price of $65,000 per acre heretofore as Schedule B be accepted, subject to the following conditions. One, the purchaser being allowed until 15 days after waiver of conditions to examine the title at the purchaser's own expense. Two, the purchaser within 30 days from the acceptance of offer carrying out soil tests as might reasonably require. And, three, the proposed commencement date of construction being within two years from the date of deed in place of the required one year from date of deed. Three, offered to purchase industrial land, 1904826 Ontario Inc., Part I, III, and IV, Plan 33R 16368, Cuddy Industrial Lands. That as a procedural matter pursuant to section 239.6 of the Municipal Act 2001, the following recommendation be forwarded to council in closed session for the purpose of considering whether the recommendation should be forwarded to council for deliberation and vote in public session. That on the recommendation of Managing Director, Corporate Services, City Treasurer, and Chief Financial Officer, and on the advice of Manager of Realty Services, the following actions be taken with respect to the city-owned industrial land located on the north side of Page Street, being part of the Cuddy Industrial Lands, containing an area of approximately 5.36 acres, being composed of Parts I, III, and IV, Plan 33R 16368, outlined on the sketch heretofore as Schedule A. A, the offer submitted by Edge Automation under the corporate name 1904826 Ontario Inc., the purchaser, to purchase subject lands from the city at a purchase price of $348,400, reflecting a sale price of $65,000 per acre heretofore as Schedule B be accepted, subject to the following conditions. One, purchaser being allowed until 15 days after waiver of conditions to examine the title at purchaser's own expense. Two, the purchaser within 90 days from the acceptance of the offer carrying out soil tests as it might reasonably require. Three, the purchaser within 90 days conducting environmental inspections and investigations of property satisfactory to the purchaser. Four, there might be a numbering issue there, unless you want two threes. The purchaser within 90 days determining the financial feasibility of the purchaser's intended use of the property satisfactory to the purchaser. And five, the purchaser acknowledging and accepting the property in an "as-is" condition, and the proposed commencement date of construction being within two years of the date of deed in place of the required one year from date of deed. Four, property acquisition, 74 Wellington Road, Bus Rapid Transit Project. That as a procedural matter pursuant to section 239.6 of the Municipal Act 2001, the following recommendation be forwarded to council in closed session for the purpose of considering whether the recommendation should be forwarded to council for deliberation and vote in public session. That on the recommendation of the Managing Director, Corporate Services and City Treasurer, Chief Financial Officer, with concurrence of the Managing Director of Environmental and Engineering Services and City Engineer, the Director of Roads and Transportation, and the Project Director of Rapid Transit Implementation, on the advice of the Manager of Realty Services, the following actions be taken with respect to the property located 74 Wellington Road, further described as Part Lots IV and V, Plan 95 Fourth, further described as P I N 083570079, containing an area of approximately 4,187 square feet, as shown on the location map for the purpose of future road improvements to accommodate bus rapid transit initiative. A, the offer submitted by Justin Bardawell, the vendor, to sell the subject property to the city for the sum of $290,000 be accepted, subject to the following conditions. One, the city agreeing to pay the vendor's reasonable legal costs. Two, the city agreeing to pay the vendor's reasonable appraisal costs up to an amount of $3,611.47. The city having the right to view the property on two further times prior to closing. Four, the transaction including all existing fixtures, shuttles, and appliances. And five, the vendor removing four small trees and the reverse osmosis drinking system from the property in advance of the completion date. And B, the financing for this acquisition be approved as set out in the source of financing report heretofore attached to its Appendix A. After presentation of the public report of council in closed session, the following -- I didn't need to read that.
Just let me say that you're first in line in the cafeteria this evening, so thank you very much. And Counselor Turner?
Your Worship, I'd just like to declare a pecuniary urge just with respect to the property at 74 Wellington Road, as I own a property in proximity to that location.
Counselor Park?
Thank you. I just wanted to provide clarification on why I'm not declaring a pecuniary conflict of interest on this incident. My property is 600 meters away, so I don't feel I have a conflict.
Counselor Morgan?
Yes, on the sale of industrial lands, which Counsel Ridley just gave us all the details on, one in the Trafalgar Industrial Park, two in the Cuddy Industrial Park. My understanding is now the Cuddy Industrial Park is completely sold out. I don't know if that can be confirmed by the Treasurer or not.
Thank you. Yes, through the Chair, after this evening, based on these land sales, all of the Cuddy lands are now officially sold.
Great. And so, I know that we've done a lot of industrial land sales, and it seems to be going very well. When is the annual Industrial Land Development Strategy Report due at council for its review?
Through, Your Worship, I believe we'll be bringing that report as scheduled for July.
So, certainly supportive of selling these lands. I think it's, I think the Industrial Land Development Strategy is going well. I think selling out a park is a positive step moving forward on the industrial sales of land, and I look forward to the monitoring report to see how we're doing in comparison to previous years.
Any other speakers? Just need a second, or please. Counselor Morgan, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. If your screen hasn't frozen, I'm going to call the question, so hopefully, Counselor Turner, we will separate out the item where you declared conflict. Thank you for that. So, we'll give Ms. Westlake power a second to do that, or a minute. Just want to confirm that that had separated out? Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Salee? Motion carries 14 to 0.
Okay, let's deal with the matter that Counselor Turner declared a conflict on. Any discussion? There are no speakers, so I'll call the question. We'll open the vote. Okay, we are voting.
And how that works is it's, it's simply with this blue film able to trap daylight. So it's not looking necessarily for sunlight, but even if it's overcast, all the photons that pass through here are trapped and generate, and generate heat. And so this is, it's a completely green and technology, and it's, it's many times more efficient than a heat pump or solar PV. And I know our, our staff is going to be looking into this, and I just wanted to ask through you if they think they would be able to find an appropriate pilot project for something like this at the, at the city of London.
The chair.
Thank you, Your Worship. We are excited to learn a little bit more about this technology, and we are setting, in the process of setting up a meeting with the vendors so we can see how it works and what would be an appropriate potential use for it. Whether or not there's a pilot project, we'd have to discover a little bit more about the technology first, but certainly very interesting. We appreciate the council bringing it to our attention.
Yes, thank you very much. So some exciting possibilities with this, in my mind, certainly it'd be great for, well, almost a little too bad we weren't able to heat the streets with, with this over on the Flex Street or even on Hamilton Road, but I see great possibilities for the new bus shelters we're putting up. So some, some very exciting things. Heating pools, a wonderful application for this because, of course, you, we don't need to, with technologies like this, they don't necessarily cost extra for, for, for a little more heat. So wonderful things coming forward for, for planet Earth.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other inquiries? There are none. Emergent motions. There are none. Let's move to bylaws. Colleagues, we've got a number of bylaws to deal with. Let's deal with bill two four eight, two four nine, two five zero, two five four, and two five five separately. All of those bylaws involve a conflict that councillor Turner declared, so we'll deal with those separately at the end of the meeting. Let's deal with the balance, unless you'd like others to be pulled. Moved by councillor Usher, seconded by councillor Turner. Any discussion? This is first reading. Right. Let's call the question. First reading, all bills with the exception of two four eight, two four nine, two five zero, two five four, and two five five. We are voting.
Closing the vote, the motion carries, fourteen to zero.
And second reading, moved by councillor Morgan, also on the speakers list, seconded by councillor Armstrong. We'll go to councillor Morgan. Any other speakers?
Yes, a brief inquiry on bill number two forty-four, which is, looks like a relatively routine assumption of a road in my ward, Dalmugerry. It looks like we're only assuming half the road. I wonder if our staff can comment on why we would do that and what the rationale would be.
Legends have been written about this road. Mr. Costas.
Through his worship, so I believe there are two different M-plans. One on the west was Smart Centers, the one on the east was Drewlow Holdings. The works on the west were completed, the actual boundaries were down the center line of the road. There's two separate parcels, one for the east and one for the west, and there's still some outstanding works on the east side in association with future development that's occurring there that we're not ready yet to assume.
Thank you. I appreciate the answer, and I also appreciate that there's no median blocking the access to Walmart.
And countless others as well. Okay, other speakers? Let's call the question. Second reading.
Closing the vote, the motion carries, fourteen to zero.
Third reading, moved by councillor Zafman, seconded by councillor Hopkins. Any, well, there is no discussion on third reading, so let's call the question. We'll open the vote.
Councillor Van Holst? Closing the vote, the motion carries, fourteen to zero.
Okay, bills, two four eight, two four nine, two five zero, two five four, two five five. Looking for a mover. Councillor Armstrong, seconded by councillor Usher. Let's call the question.
Councillor Helmer? Closing the vote, the motion carries, thirteen with one recused.
And second reading, moved by councillor Armstrong, seconded by councillor Hopkins. Any, well, there is no discussion on third reading, so let's call the question. We'll open the vote.
Councillor Van Holst? Closing the vote, the motion carries, fourteen to zero.
Okay, bills, two four eight, two four nine, two five zero, two five four, two five five. Looking for a mover. Councillor Armstrong, seconded by councillor Usher. Let's call the question.
Councillor Helmer? Closing the vote, the motion carries, thirteen with one recused.
And second reading, moved by councillor Armstrong, seconded by councillor Helmer. Any speakers? There are no speakers. Let's call the question. And we're voting.
Closing the vote, the motion carries, thirteen with one recused.
Third reading, colleagues, moved by councillor Usher, seconded by councillor Hopkins. Let's call the question.
Councillor Helmer? Closing the vote, the motion carries, thirteen with one recused.
And at five ten, we can call for adjournment. Moved by councillor Ridley, seconded by councillor Usher. All those in favor, opposed if any. Thanks, everyone. Enjoy your evening.